All right, if I can get everybody's attention, we'll call the March 31st, 2022 Washington County Planning Board Meeting to Order. Row call, please.
Joel Kelsey.
Here.
Philip Humbard.
Here.
Neil Helm.
Here.
Jay Piercy. Lauren Shackelford.
Here.
All right, if anybody's had a chance to look at the meetings, if you've got any changes or what, if you're okay with it, then I'll take a motion in a second.
Make a motion to approve agenda stated.
No, it's the minutes.
Sorry, the minutes, a motion to make.
All right, got a motion to approve the minutes? Got a second, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, next thing is the approval of the agenda is as is Blake. All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda stated.
All right, got a motion, got a second, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right. First item up's old business, which will be under the Fayetteville Planning Area. Before I get started, let me just reiterate that this has been before us a couple of times. We've heard a lot of the concerns and so forth, and this is basically just more or less a density hearing to discuss that. But again, you come up and speak, you got three minutes to speak, 10 minutes if you're speaking for a group. Again, I just remind you to be respectful of that, and like I said, you know, a lot of things have been heard, not to say that you can't speak again, but we'll go from there. If anybody's got any questions, let me know, if not, we'll go to item A, which is Ellis Estates CUP presented by Seda.
All right, so the Ellis Estates subdivision conditional use permit is situated within the Fayetteville Planning Area. So the applicant is here to request a CUP to allow non-conforming residential lots of less than an acre. Section 11-55B of the Washington County Code states that subdivisions within the extraterritorial growth areas of incorporated cities shall be developed in accordance of that particular city's standards. And to date, Fayetteville has already given its approval of the subdivision contingent upon county approval. So the applicant first submitted the Ellis Estates subdivision in July 2021 and proposed at that time a total of 56 lots. The applicant is now requesting approval to construct a total of 48 lots. Forty-five of these will be residential, all of which will be non-conforming to current county zoning, as they are less than one acre per residential unit. The other three will be utilized for septic and drainage purposes. So densities of less than one residential unit per acre does exist within the immediate area and within the city boundaries, which are less than a mile away. The parcels highlighted in yellow are the parcels that are less than one acre in size with residential uses. Again, this project is within the city of Fayetteville's growth area, and they have already approved it. Site visits, so there's an existing residence and a shed on the property. The remainder of the property is vacant and undeveloped. And these are east and west images along Highway 45 at around 2:00 PM in the afternoon. So the project gained a lot of public comments since it was first proposed in 2021. The majority of these comments are in opposition to the project. These are the concerns, the concerns are drainage, excess traffic on an already congested highway, the noise of what an additional 45 families might bring, the additional lights from street lamps and houses. There were comments about how this development might devalue their current property values, and how these new single-family residences may be rentals and therefore bringing in non-owner residents, i.e. renters, who may or may not be upstanding citizens. The subdivision connects to nearby subdivisions per city requirements, thus will bring additional traffic to small, quiet neighborhoods. The density does not belong in an area that is zoned for larger densities. Mud Creek is nearby, so there were concerns about water quality coming from the septic fields and additional pollution from an additional 45 families. There was concern about county integrity since we proposed not to hear the CUP at first, because the state says that cities have authority over subdivision developments within their planning areas. And additionally, there was also a multi-page petition of citizens whom are opposed to the project as is. I did not bring copies of the petition or of the comments, because I feel at this point, members of the board have seen them. But if you would like them, I can email them to you after this meeting. So staff has reviewed the submitted documents and recommends the following conditions of approval. Are there any questions from the board to staff?
Any questions for Seda, anyone? All right. Is the applicant here, would you like to add anything?
George DeCame of Blue and Associates here, if you have any questions. Thank you.
Anybody got any questions? All right, then I'll take it to public comment. If you'd like to speak in either for or against, if you'll state your name and address in the microphone for the record would be great.
Hi again, my name is Scott Jackson, I live at 2805 Altus Drive. My property is to the immediate northwest corner of this proposed development. As you know, I've spoken before, I'm opposed to this project. The proposed development is nowhere near the one acre minimum that is found in our county ordinance, and they're not asking for just a one-lot variance or a two-lot variance to, you know, build a guest house on a piece of property or something like that. We're talking about a 48-lot variance. Simply put, it's too many homes in too small of an area at a time when our infrastructure simply cannot support this type of project. I have been to every hearing on this at both the city and the county level. I have yet to hear from the actual developers who are asking for you to approve this particular project. What I can tell you is that long after this committee decides whatever it's going to do with this, if you allow this to happen, it's the people behind me, the people who you've received comments from, the people who have signed petitions against this particular project, who get to live with it. What that means for us is that we get to put up with the chainsaws and the dump trucks and the earth movers and the hammers and the construction crime and the inevitable power line and septic line and fiber line and water main breaks before this project is even completed. And then we get to put up with the rest of the problems. The neighborhood septic system that's less than 100 feet from Mud Creek, the additional 120 or so people, the 90-plus cars on our road, a state highway with a speed limit that's already 55 miles an hour, with a passing lane that goes right past this particular project, meaning a dotted yellow line, not an actual passing lane. The schools are already overcrowded, I know something about that, my third grader is in a split class this year, she's in class with second graders, because we don't have enough teachers at Vandergriff to handle the population that's already there, and we're going to add to that with this project. Make no mistake, this is a precedent-setting development. What you do here with this project will impact developments up and down Highway 45, and I've looked, there's a 59-acre parcel less than a quarter mile east of this development on Highway 45. What will our answer be when a developer convinces that trust to sell the property to them? There's a 15-acre parcel behind Suns Chapel, a 13-acre parcel across from New Haven Subdivision, which by the way, is one and a half acre lots. There's an eight, there are 81 acres on the north side of Highway 45, just before you head down the hill going to Goshen. What do we tell people when they want to develop that property with not 45 homes, but hundreds of homes based on the precedent that you that you make in this hearing? The good news is that you don't have to take my word for it. The individual, Mr. Rup, who is asking for you to approve this particular project, he's the trustee of the trust, back when Eastern Park was built in 2014, he opposed it. He sent an email to the Planning Commission that says, when the county administrators set the, this is again, this is the person asking you to approve this project.
Okay, and I'm gonna, I don't mean to interrupt, but I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap it up, you're past your three minutes.
I'm gonna share this email with you, I'm gonna leave it with you, if that's okay.
Okay.
Mr. Rup opposed that because he said that the county knew what it was doing when it put a one acre minimum in place. I agree with him. That's the person who's asking you to approve that. This is simply too dense a project, too large a development at a time when our infrastructure, both schools, roads, simply cannot support it. It's not too late to do the right thing in this and deny this particular project. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I leave this with Seda? Yes, you sure can. If you'll state your name and address, please, ma'am.
Yes, I'm Jennifer McGill, and my address is 2395 North Tena's Crossing. I own 12 acres that sits directly across Highway 45 from the proposed development. One of the things that, when we buy in the county, we don't want neighbors on top of us, we don't want the traffic, the congestion, and all the things that living in the city brings. I want to speak specifically to an example that I witnessed firsthand, and I need everybody to take this seriously. There was a car accident on Highway 45 at the intersection of Oakland Zion. This happened in 2018. I witnessed the accident. The person driving had a medical emergency and crashed into the trees. They were unconscious. I pulled them from the vehicle and started CPR while a fellow motorist called 911. It took one hour for the state troopers to respond to a fatality, okay? A fatality. Individual residents were out directing traffic. There was no Fayetteville Fire Department there, that is less than one mile from the city limits, and that is a major concern that I have. Traffic in the mornings because of Vandergriff backs up all the way from Vandergriff past Tena's Crossing. That is miles of traffic that is prone for accidents. Oakland Zion is a cut-through. People are cutting through, there are accidents there all the time. The emergency services to support that area is Goshen Volunteer Fire Department. Goshen Police and State Troopers. It is not okay to have us going up and down a state highway and Fayetteville making decisions on our property out there and our resources if they're not going to provide us fire and support that we need. So for that reason, to me, the density needs to be off the table. You know, that's more competition, if I have a fire at my house, there's a lot more people that that fire department is serving if we're messing with the density to decrease it down instead of one per acre. So I, again, I say this in a life and death situation. The schools can't support the density, the fire department, the infrastructure, the police, even the state police. So if you think it's okay to wait one hour for a car accident on Highway 45 when it could be your child in the car, it's not okay. And there's going to be a lot more cars on that highway. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
One more thing, the person did die.
Anyone else?
Hi, good afternoon, my name is Rob McEver, I live at 4446 East Windamere Drive in Fayetteville. So I'm going to reiterate some of the same things that Mr. Jackson said, and this is just too large of a subdivision, it's not just a density issue, this is just too large of a subdivision for the existing infrastructure. I have seen other communities much like ours in Georgia where I grew up, very similar to Washington County, where they now have moratoriums on development, because developments like this have outstripped the infrastructure to a point, they've just had to say no to everything. I don't think that's a good place for Washington County to be. I don't think anybody behind me is against development. I think development's good, it's good for our community, but it's got to be smart. I mean, all, when you, you can't pick up the paper today and not read about smart development. This is just not a smart development. It's too big, it's stretching the infrastructure, not only the road, but also the schools, and it's just going to develop into a worse and worse situation there. And we're looking to you as fellow citizens to help us all out. And I think Mr. Jackson had a really good point, right? If this is such a good development, where are, where's the developer? You know, where is the investors that are investing in this? Well, they know it's not good for the community. They're in it for themselves. You know, they're going to go make their money today, leave it with us in the community, and when a moratorium hits later, they've already made their money and they're gone. So I would ask that you consider that, and what's smart about development, and how we need to approach development, and this just isn't it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Randy Anderson, 2879 North Altus Drive. Been there since 93, been on Altus Drive since 1980 in another house. It was part of, it was built in 1880, 1865. I, I believe, I agree with all these things that I've heard at other meetings and all, it's, it's, I won't be, I'll be less concerned about one house per acre. It just seems to me like the ordinance should stand. But I have a complaint, a situation, it's kind of unique to me probably, I want to just take a little bit of time there. I've been on a water well this whole time, a great water well, never, never low, sometimes overflows. And I'm not too far from, you probably have the maps there, from the septic. I worry about the septic system, you know, that's supposed to clean it up, and you know what it does, right? Clean it up so you can have a whole bunch more than you normally would. I figure if you have one house per acre, you can have a, have septic and it'd probably be okay. But I'm afraid my water will be contaminated, and I'm afraid, this is going to be approved, it just seems to me like somebody should take care of my hooking up thousands of dollars, thousands and thousands of dollars to hook up the city water, if I'm going to be forced off because of bad water. I know the system's not supposed to fail, but don't all machines fail sometimes? You know, so I just, I just think that somebody should take care of the hooking my house to water, whether it's the developer, the seller, the county, or the city, or something, and, you know, this, I'm not, I'm not asking for this, but I'm paying probably four or five dollars a month electricity, maybe less for my water. And everybody I talk to says I'll be lucky if my water bill be 50, 60 dollars a month. But, but the main thing is, I like my water well, I don't want to have to hook up, but if, if there's a danger in the water, then I think that somebody should help me pay for that.
Thank you. All right.
Sure you're tired of seeing me. My name's Beth McEver, I live at 4446 East Windamere Drive. I'm just going to tell you that from living out there on 45 and trying to get out on 45 at specific times of the day, it is dangerous now, you put 90 more cars in there, and I'm just going to tell you, I feel for the people, if this went through, that they'd buy those houses and they don't know what they're getting into. I've said that before, this is, I'm for growth, don't, I am for growth, but responsible growth. I hate it when we talk about not getting more schools built, not getting roads safer, because it doesn't affect everybody, but the people that live there, it certainly does, and then it could go to somebody else. I've been told recently about another neighborhood that was trying to go in, and they said, you've got to go talk about it, because we are not prepared, and I know we said one time, well, that's the way it's always been. Why? Why does it have to be that way? Why don't we do the responsible thing for the citizens in Washington County and get the roads ready, get the schools built? Then we can talk about neighborhoods, but we can't talk about a neighborhood this big, this many houses and put it out there. I have sat on Oakland Zion when there was an accident for over an hour, and there were only four cars on Oakland Zion, but the whole of 45 was jam-packed, and once again, somebody died in that. I can't hardly stomach the thought of anyone getting back out on that road with 90-plus more cars every day and someone dying, especially a child, because we've got so much school traffic. It just, it makes me sick, and it makes me so unhappy that no one thinks about it until after the fact. Well, can we start thinking about it now, before we've messed up and then everybody has to suffer the consequences? Thank you. Oh, and my prayers go out to everybody in Springdale, because.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi there.
My name is Claudia Clark, I live with my husband William, who's with me tonight, at 4295 East Trough Springs Road. I wanted to share a few points with you. First, I'll address density, we've talked about density before, and the current proposed plan is not compatible with the immediate area. May I direct you to another new development? There's one that is located on the south side of East Mission across from the Altus Drive area. The lots are being sold and construction is well underway. These are one and two acre lots with sizable homes on them. There are two acres or more. On Trough Springs Road immediately to the west of this proposed area, there are five homes on this Trough Springs Road. The lots are much larger, they average four and a half acres on Trough Springs Road, the average. So with the Mission construction, the Trough Springs, building the lots on Trough Springs and the residents on Altus, you're surrounded by much larger lots. This density needs to be reduced tremendously at this proposed development. Again, we're not opposed to development, we're opposed to this intense density of development with the surrounding, immediate surrounding lots much larger. Secondly, I understand that this area is in the city planning zone. I look to the City Plan 2040, and I offer these points. Under the goals, the second goal of the City Plan 2040 is to discourage suburban sprawl. Under the heading Next Steps, the seventh goal is to manage rural growth and maintain rural character. I don't know how you maintain rural character with tiny lots in an overly dense area. It would seem that these overly dense proposed development would not be in keeping with the City Plan 2040 goals and objectives. Thirdly, with a dense building development comes overburdened septic systems. Historically, these decentralized systems have been problematic. I offer the following, currently, within a quarter of a mile of this proposed septic system, we have two failed septic systems. One on Mission at the Mission cottages, and one on Oakland Zion at the townhouses, owned by Mr. Robert Schmidt owns them. Currently, and for the last year and a half, raw sewage has been pouring onto the ground and onto the ground at the northeast Baptist Church grounds. The Washington County Public Health Department is aware of it, I've worked with them on this project. For a year and a half, we've been addressing this raw sewage. These systems are problematic. This morning, I had a long conversation with one of the representatives from the Department of Public Health here in Washington County.
Ms. Clark, I don't mean to interrupt you, you're past your three minutes.
I'll, I'll end it right now. He also said that these systems are problematic, and property owners' associations have little recourse, because they never have enough money to put away and prepare for these expensive repairs. So again, I think we can avoid a lot of these problems if we use good sense and have less density. I respectfully appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Bless you. Anyone else?
I'm Leah Randolph, 4653 East Mission Boulevard, Fayetteville, Arkansas. I have petitions, and I even have more than I emailed previously.
I would just give them to Seda, ma'am. I'd give them to Seda, if you don't mind.
Okay, well, last time I was here, he told me to hand them out, and would you give, this is all, give that to him as well. Thank you.
Okay, also, I have the email from Gary Rope back in 2014 as well, where he was definitely not in approval to Eastern Park being developed. So that, to me, is, you know, I'm wondering, okay, well, it's, he wasn't okay with it back then. Okay, so my next question is, I want to ask if any of you have been out to the property to see the lay of the land, the very beautiful mature trees, the pond, and where the creek is. And actually, it just breaks my heart to see that they're just going to come in and chop all the trees down, and they're not going to leave any green space hardly, and that decentralized septic system is going to be so close to Mud Creek. And also, the other thing is, is, you know, if they chop down all the trees and they fill in the pond, so those are big concerns of mine, and then the traffic and the density of it. And so then the, the other thing is, there's Horsepin Estates and Sloan, which are right around the corner, and I don't know if, if they have been reporting, because I have firsthand from one of the neighbors close to Horsepin, where the septic system, the decentralized septic system, is overflowing and is always broken from Horsepin running into the farm, the farmland. And so these are unregulated, not managed right. If you expect an association to manage a. And you guys probably don't even know what is going on with these septic systems in some of these housing developments. So, the, I just don't know if maybe we could, before you allow a whole bunch of these out in the community, maybe that you guys maybe set some standards, and put someone in charge over, you know, checking on them, and making them, clean them out properly, you know, at a ti, in a timely fashion. So, that's a concern. So, I, I just really beg and implore you, you all to please keep this zoning to at least the one acre for how it's zoned out there. Because right now, with the structure of, and the highway, and as everyone else has mentioned, it, it's just not timely for this type and size of a development to be going in with what we have. So if we could just at least do the zoning of one acre per home as its zone. And then, I, I do have a quote here from Franklin D. Roosevelt.
Ma'am, I'm gonna have to ask you, your three minutes are up.
Okay, can I quote very quickly?
Very, very quickly.
Okay. "A nation that destroys its soils destroys itself. Forests are the lungs of our land, purifying the air and giving fresh strength." That's Franklin D. Roosevelt.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you all.
My name is Jim Carson. I live at five zero five eight East Woods Edge Road, which is County Road three forty-eight, which comes out up to Highway forty-five directly on, opposite the driveway from this proposed subdivision. We have, we'd have to make a left turn going into town, it's hard to do now, with all these stream of cars during the school time, time for going to school, the time for going to work. We can look up that highway, and it's completely filled, clear up the, we can see about a half a mile up the hill, and it's filled. I can, I can just see what it would be like with people coming out the, out facing us to take a right turn, and how, how we're, how are we gonna get out? There's no provision, or no even, even talk that I've heard about putting in a stoplight there. I talked to the DOT about it, and they said, "Well, the county, who is the governing body, has to make the application, has to pay for the traffic studies." Nobody's doing that. So the highway is the big, big thing with me. Densifying the area is also a huge thing. Just putting that many houses, you're making a city out of our little rural area. And please don't do that. If you do, you're not serving the people of Washington County, you, you might be serving the, the developer, who's, wants to build all the houses he can, you might be serving the city. Maybe they want to densify this area, because it makes it be more like a city. But I don't think that would, should be your job. And you all, you all have the email that I sent to you, outlining my position on this, and please take note.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. I'm Brian Ketchum, live on Oakland Zion, in Trough Springs at the corner. My problem is the density, too many places being built there. I served on the Philip County Board of Sewer for, as Vice President, for fourteen years. I know, nobody's even thought about how nasty it's gonna be with all the sewage. The small lots, it's gonna cause, everybody has at least one dog, and that's wonderful, I'm a dog lover. How, where are the kids gonna play in these little bitty small yards with all the, the dog poop and stuff? Plus the raw sewage, there're gonna be a lot of sick people. That's why I was on the board. We did straighten it out, but it was terrible, terrible, terrible getting it there, because of the raw sewage. I know these manholes with the little red lights, they'll be going off all the time. There's no place to put it. Every household at least runs sixty to out, sixty to eighty gallons of water to take a shower. Every household, the toilets flush at least ten to fifteen times a day. Nobody's thought about it. Everybody, and it can't be done with this many homes. Twenty-four would be even pushing it legally. I just, I wished I could've got a hold of the sewers pollution control before I came, but I was not able to get to that, so I could have a, a letter on how many houses it could be on that amount of land. There's gonna be a lot of sick people. Appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
Hello? My name's Chris Jacob. I live at forty-five oh three East Mission Boulevard, which is across the road from the proposed subdivision. Before I begin, I'd like to thank you all for your time. I'm seriously concerned with the Ellis Estate subdivision as it is currently proposed. I'm very much a proponent of responsible development, which in my opinion, this is not. A significant issue with this project is the density and how it will put a huge strain on our current infrastructure. Many others have commented on the multitude of problems in this regard, so I will not rehash these points, so I hope we all understand just how problematic they are. What I will talk about is value. I think if someone is requesting to be exempted from a rule that applies to everyone, they need to bring a significant amount of value in some way. Bringing value can come in many ways, one of which might be to not set a sewer treatment system directly on top of a tributary of a major creek for the city of Fayetteville. I had the privilege of getting a bird's eye view of this tributary to Mud Creek days before the January meeting, and it was much more active and much closer than has been portrayed by the applicants. It had not rained in days, and still this creek was flowing freely. In fact, the creek was visible from hundreds of feet in the air. Now, I am no hydrologist, but I'm willing to bet that the same water that I can easily find not far underground on my own property, a mere one hundred feet away, is coming from the same source that is feeding that flowing creek. Disposing of fifty homes' worth of human waste so close to this water source just seems irresponsible. That returns us to the value, to the idea of bringing value. Destroying a creek and the related springs in the area seems like the opposite of bringing value. Clearcutting over fifteen acres of wooded land seems like the opposite of bringing value. Reducing the size of the only green space designated to properly handle human waste to avoid losing additional lots seems like the opposite of bringing value. Placing more strain on an already taxed infrastructure in the immediate area seems like the opposite of bringing value. My point is that the subdivision does not bring value to the residents of Washington County, but seems to do quite the opposite. In fact, the only value this project seems to add is to the bottom line of the developers. If we were looking at something like twenty one-acre lots built around an existing pond and creek, that would certainly bring value to the area. But we are not, so I ask you to please seriously consider denying, again, this CUP on the basis of being the opposite of a value add for the residents of East Fayetteville and Washington County. Thank you. I've got a, a few pictures of the, the tributary that flows right through the septic system.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
My name is William A. Clark. I live at forty-two ninety-five East Trough Springs Road. I just wanna follow up on some of the comments Mr. Jackson made, he was the first speaker tonight, and reiterate that it's critically important that a wise, well-studied decision be made here, at this local planning board. I was involved in a similar experience to this a few years ago, where this, the, the future action of a petition got remanded on over to the State Health Department to make the decision on sewage system, the decentralized septic system. They rubber stamped it. They told me in two or three different conversations, when I was talking to the engineers there, that they had come up and walked over that property. But none of them knew that there was a two-acre pond fifty feet away. How'd they walk over the property and not know there was fifty feet pond, a two-acre pond fifty feet away? They rubber stamped it. A bureaucratic process. You all are local, you need to make the local decision, you need to make a wise decision. All the comments from that previous experience, and it had to do with Eastern Park subdivision, all the previous comments made were not sent to the State Department, the people who were gonna make the ultimate decision on that decentralized septic system. I saw the engineers layout, I saw all the drawings, and his books, and his statistics, and his data, and read through it as best I could. So they had a pretty picture made there for somebody who was, had a rubber stamp on the edge of their desk. They approved it based on his very professional presentation, his professional, except for the validity of the thing. So, if it gets beyond this point, we lose control, we lose any input. And I just think, I just, I just hope you'll, you'll, you'll relook at it and take these comments into consideration. And with that, I'll say, only thing else I have to say, is that in some of these people come to speak, three minutes is not enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, does the applicant have anything else that he would want to add?
To be perfectly honest, we've reiterated this project more than enough. Good, thank you.
All right. Okay, it's to the board.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question for staff? Can you show us again the radius maps and the number of times that we've approved density and on the, on the, I think there's a, what is there, a one acre and a fi, a one mile and a five mile radius? Can we see that map again, please? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to catch you off guard.
Okay, so the purple is a half-mile radius.
Okay. So there's one, two, three, four, five, seven, okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Then again, I'll say it's to the board.
That one on the...
You got lots of buttons, it's the bottom, there you go.
There you go, maybe that works. Question of the engineer, alternate sewer system location? What, what happens if there is a problem? What's, what, what's the recourse?
So we're actually, are, that property in the front is, I don't know if you've noticed, but it's pretty significant in size, like, significant, significant. And the sewer, we're having to put basically a catch basin at the bottom, and that's required by the city of Fayetteville. They make us drain it through gravity sewer, gravity sewer's gonna drain towards the creek, because that's gonna be the lowest point. And then we pick it up, get it into a tank, and we pump it all the way up to Highway forty-five, or Mi, I think that's Mission Boulevard. And then from there, it gets into the leach field and spread around there. But our property that we're leaving for that piece is quite large for the amount of area that we need. So if it does start failing in one area, I, it's almost like a regular septic system, we do have more area for those leach fields to be relocated to. In the past, whenever I've done these projects, that's what we see, you know, it's usually, you leave plenty of area so that if it does start failing, that they have an opportunity to fix it in some form or fashion.
Okay, once...
I'm answering your questions.
Yes, I understand. When you had, went through the city of Fayetteville, was there talk of hooking it up to Fayetteville Sewer at some point?
They made us run it this way so that they could hook it up to Fayetteville Sewer, as Fayetteville, I mean, Fayetteville's gonna start extending in this direction, and they're gonna run their sewer mains down that creek, 'cause that is the lowest point. So, they make us run it this way so that in the event that Fayetteville does get sewer out in that direction, we can make the connection. When that's gonna happen, I'm guessing is when all that property gets annexed into Fayetteville. You're, and I don't have, I don't have any idea of timeframe on that.
Are you familiar enough with the POA agreement to know what contingencies they have put in there for future?
I, I honestly, I have not looked at the POA agreement. I mean, to be perfectly honest with you, we're having a hard time with the septic people and getting that one completed and left, but we are trying to make sure that we give them plenty of room. I mean, you probably know, engineering companies right now are very, very busy, so getting them to complete something is difficult.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Any further questions, it's to the board then?
Are we through as far as what we can? I, I just had a question concerning the size of the area he's talking about, where they're gonna put this septic system. I'd like to know the, the area size, if I could. And the other question I had, if it's all right to speak?
I've already been past the public comment part of it, sir. If you wanna address the size of the, the septic area, you're more than welcome, I'm not gonna require you to.
We can show it, Cita, do you?
Three point seven acres, is that what?
Yeah, it looks like lot forty-seven is three point seven eight acres.
Yeah.
Yeah, mine's kinda blurry when I blow it up, so, okay.
That's another three and a half acres, that's what's already going to be.
Okay, it's to the board.
So I'll ask a question of the county attorney, again. We are strictly looking at density, all other aspects are to the city of Fayetteville, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and we have five members here.
On a CUP, you'll require four yeses.
It'll require four yeses.
Requires the majority of the total body, not just those present.
Okay, so it takes four, and then regardless approval, it goes to court and court.
That's correct.
Denial, it gets petition, the applicant has the ability to...
Well, it can be appealed, either way, it can be appealed to the court and court. It has to go to the court and court for final approval, whether you approve it or deny it, it, both ways will, can go to the court and court regardless.
Yes, thank you, sir, appreciate it. So Mr. Chair, I guess, okay, so first of all, I do serve on another planning board in which we have a two-hundred-home community on a step system, another fifty-home community on a step system, that border on White River, which is a water feed for Beaver Lake. I have sat through a lot of communications on the step systems, the ability to properly manage those. I've also lived east of Fayetteville since two thousand and two, two thousand and three. I know traffic is a tremendous issue. Unfortunately, it's a state highway, I mean, we need to address that with our state legislatures, our state representatives, because we can't force anything on Highway forty-five. I've also put four kids through Vandergriff Elementary, I know what school overcrowding is, but I also know that the tax revenue from growth is how we get new schools. So, this is a difficult situation, I understand both sides. I understand both sides. I also realize that, you know, we've approved these sorts of things in close proximity to this. I think it's, it's time to take action and move this to the quorum court. So based on those statements, I'll make a motion for recommendation of approval of this as stated.
I've got a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes five zero. Next item up on agenda is the Fayetteville Planning Area, the Ellis Estates Pre-Subdivision. Cita? Hey, if I will, if I'll ask you, if you, if you still get conversation, if you mind taking it outside where we can get on with the meeting would be great. If not, I'll ask you.
Listen to us and not do anything.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, enjoy your evening.
Who you're working for?
Can somebody get a deputy, please? Can somebody get a deputy? No, all right, Cita, go ahead.
Um, so item B is the preliminary review of the Ellis Estates subdivision. The applicant is requesting approval of their preliminary plat for the Ellis Estates subdivision. There will be a total of forty-eight lots, three of which are to be utilized for drainage and septic. There are no major outstanding issues during the technical review phase of this project. The county contracted engineer has stated that he will address any drainage concerns during the construction phase review. Just to point out where the drainage and septic lots are, respectively lots forty-six, forty-seven, and forty-eight. The main entrance to the subdivision will be from Highway forty-five. The applicant is aware that permits from RDOT will be needed to connect to the highway. There are four other connections to the subdivision, three are for future connections, and these are circled in red, and the one that's circled in blue in the bottom right of the screen, that one will connect to an existing neighborhood that's adjacent to the proposed Ellis Estates subdivision. These are the same photos from the CUP. There are existing structures on it that will be removed, and the rest of the property is pretty much vacant. Again, this is about two PM along Highway forty-five. We just went through the public comments during the CUP, so if you don't mind, I'll skip that. Staff has reviewed the supplemental documents and find that the applicant has fulfilled enough of the checklist items and recommends these conditions of approval. Any questions?
All right, thank you, ma'am. Since we've already addressed the applicant, we've already had public comment, then I think I can move on and take it to the, the board, right, Brian?
Can I make, have a question?
I don't, I don't know. I don't know what, if your bylaws state that you have to take public comment before voting on anything. I don't have that in front of me.
Well, then, I don't have that in front of me either, so we'll just go ahead. Would the applicant like to say anything?
Well, I guess since we're at the subdivision part of it, I just wanted to reiterate, we had to go through the city of Fayetteville, so most of the designs, the stub outs, all the requirements for the connection are to meet the city of Fayetteville requirements. The location of the entrance into the subdivision was because we had to meet fire requirements, so there is a certain separation distance between those two, which is what we're doing there. City of Fayetteville did request a second entrance onto Mission. We did get a variance for that, so the only connection that they requested us to make at that point was to actually connect the sidewalk up to the sidewalk on Mission. And it's been a few months since I've worked on this project, so that is as good as my memory is for the time being. So if you guys have any other questions?
I have one, sir. So the variance for the additional curb cut onto Mission, was there any other variance requested and granted by city of Fayetteville from their normal design standards?
That was the only one that we really needed.
Thank you, sir.
All right, then I'll open it up to public comment. Like I said, all, all your comments are already on the record. Care to speak again, you got three minutes.
Hi, my name is Helen Duran, and I live at four two seven four Tross Springs Road, which is due west of the proposed development. I just have one question, looking at the design. I was looking at the two, well, the three proposed stub outs, and looking at the city information, it says the stub outs will be looked at, whether they're arbitrary or not. The one that is on the east and the one that's on the west is going into people's backyards. So how is that feasible? The one that's going to the north, I think, has a potential of eventually hooking into another road, but the one going to the east is a person's backyard, the one going to the west is a person's backyard, actually it's going to their basement. That's just my comment.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? All right, to the board.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion for recommendation of approval of the Ellis Estates Pre-Sub as stated.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. With it passing both, this will go to the quorum court. Next quorum court meeting is?
Wait, we are, sorry, we're in April.
April nineteenth?
Yes.
So. All right.
But they, there's a thirty day window, so it won't go to the next quorum court meeting.
It won't go to the next one, that's right.
Because there's a thirty day window that anybody wants to appeal, so.
Yeah, so you have appeal, you got thirty days. So, okay. New business, conditional use permit hearing, Springdale Planning Area, Motor City CUP, presented by Blake Chapman.
Good evening.
The Motor City CUP is for a proposed auto sales lot near Sonora, north of four twelve east, about a half mile up Hewitt Road. The proposal calls for a mobile, direction, the proposal calls for a mobile office to be placed on a half acre lot, and the entire perimeter to be surrounded with wood picket fence. Maximum signage would be six feet by six feet non-illuminated. The surrounding area is agricultural and residential with chicken coops around. Immediately east of the parcel is a creek bed that swoops down, the, the general terrain kind of slopes down easterly. The usual planning conditions apply, including septic requirements if, if water is desired in the future. Planning requirements include mitigation of vehicle fluids from contaminating the soil, lighting mitigation to not be a nuisance to neighbors. Additionally, the county engineer would require a drainage culvert installed to maintain existing flow. Thank you.
Anybody got any questions for Blake? All right, is the applicant here? Would he like to say anything?
Yes.
All right, you come up, state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is William Alvaro. I live at eight oh nine Woodbridge Drive. So my plan is to have a small business there in Hewitt Springs. I'm not going to turn my, 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 my idea is not to turn my, my, my business into a salvage yard. I have zero intention of doing that. Also, I don't plan to, to put any loud music or anything to bother all my neighbors, actually, because I, I think the nearest house is around three hundred or four hundred feet away, so that's not, not really close to me, but I don't have, I don't plan to do anything with those like that. I mean, also, I want to follow all the requirements by the, the city or the, the county also. And I also going to build the, the private fence surrounding my, my, my property for the security and also, and also I'm not going to use any like loud machinery, like, like really loud things like air compressor or something like that to, I'm trying to, to be the, the most quiet and, and not bother any, any of my neighbors or anything like that. And I think to see if you can have any questions, just.
Anybody got any questions for him? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody in the audience like to comment on this? All right, then it's to the board. I got a couple of things to say reference, this is about a mile, mile and a half off of four twelve. It's not really the most conducive place to put a, an auto thing. I, I will ask this question again, I think I tried to verify this. The property that's would be on the left, which I think I'm going to say is north, northwest of there, he doesn't own that property, the one that already has sixteen, eighteen cars sitting on it?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Well, I, I just, you know, my personal opinion, I just think this is a weird place to put car plates. So, anyway, it's to the board.
Maybe this is of the staff, what safeguards can we put in this to keep it from becoming a, just a salvage yard? I know we've approved one before, and it's, basically it's turned into a salvage yard, and it's been a real eyesore to me. I drive by it two or three times a day, and so that's not what we intended to approve. So I'm just curious what, what we can, I mean, is there a, some tripwire that we can put in that says if, you know, if there's more than allowable number of cars, no more can come, or until?
Right, we can add additional conditions, and also it comes down to CUP enforcement by the county.
See, and that's the hard part. I mean, you know, with where we are on the CUPs and so forth, I mean, you've got the one, I mean, I'll, I'll state it, it's the one on four twelve, where the guy was approved a small car auto sales there, and he's got, as of today, when I drove by there, there's thirty, thirty-five cars outside that fence. There's no auto shop setup, there's no nothing, there's haul trailers, and there's no telling how many cars he has behind that fence, and he's running a shop back there. So, you know, the enforcement part of it, me, for me, is also, you know, a negative So I'm going to say it's to the board.
Mr. Chair, would I move that we approve the CUP as stated?
I've got a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a second, a motion to approve in a second. Juliana, let's do a roll call.
Joel Kelsey?
No.
Philip Humbard?
Based on the conditions of the approval, I'll, I'll say yes.
Neil Helm?
Yes.
Jay Piercy?
Yes.
Lauren Schalkeford?
Yes.
Already passed, it's four to one. So, you're good, you're good, sir, it passed four to one. Now this will go on to, because it's a CUP, it will go on to quorum court for their approval. So, next section, land development hearings, county Sonora subdivision final plat, Cita?
All right, item D is the Sonora subdivision final plat. The applicants are here tonight to request final approval of the Sonora subdivision. The CUP and preliminary were both approved at the June tenth, twenty twenty-one planning board meeting. The quorum court ratified the CUP at the July fifteenth, twenty twenty-one regular meeting. The meetings were not contentious. The applicant took a sixteen point four seven acre parcel and platted it into fifteen lots. The applicant is almost complete with their development. During the technical review phase, there were no major concerns. Additionally, there are no outstanding technical concerns or comments. Staff did not receive comments or concerns from the public as the applicant started The image on the left is what the entrance to the subdivision looks like pre-development, and the image on the right is what it looks like currently. And if we've drive down a few feet, this is what we see. The Sonora subdivision is adjacent to the Sonora School on its north side, and we can see that in the distance in this image. The applicant has installed a privacy fencing along the boundary of lots nine, ten, and eleven to help visually shield potential lot owners from the solar field next door, which will be coming up for final soon. Staff would like to say that after an almost twenty-four hour period of light to heavy rains, the drainage system designed by the applicant seemed to work. Water was draining down and away from the site. And here's an image of the drainage easement between lots four and five. While staff was out there, we did notice that connections had already been made or laid for electricity and water and other utilities. Staff recommends the following conditions of approval, and these conditions have not changed since the time of your staff report. Any questions?
Any questions for Cita? All right, thank you, ma'am. Is applicant here, got to say anything?
I'm Tyler Elliott with ESI. I'm happy to help answer any questions that y'all have.
Anybody got any questions?
What's the anticipated completion date on this?
They believe that proof rolling is, is going to be done tomorrow, and then the actual pavement is going to be done by next week.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you. Anybody in the audience want to comment on this one? All right, to the board.
Mr. Chair, question to staff, just, I guess I'll still play the new, new person card. Do we typically approve final plat prior to installation of the blacktop, finally pavement on the subdivision?
It depends on just the, where they are at in, in development. Generally, it's, the, if they're, pretty much, if they check off all, a majority of the check, the checklist items, excuse me.
the checklist items, excuse me, then we suggest that they go ahead and apply for final development or final review. In the past, it's traditionally been about at this point. They usually will tend to do the blacktop and stuff.
Is there a follow-up where a county engineer, somebody verifies that it was done in compliance with the preliminary plat?
There is.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
They won't sign the final plat until it's totally complete.
That's correct.
All right, to the board.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the Sonora subdivision final plat.
Got a motion?
I'll second.
Got a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, there you go.
Thank you.
Next item in the county, item E, replat lot eight, Beavarama Park, second addition and PLA, CETA?
All right, item E. So the applicant is requesting a replat of lot eight of the Beavarama Park second addition. There will not be any new parcels created. Instead, the applicant would like to conduct a lot line adjustment with the existing lot eight and the two parcels just south. These two parcels are not within the subdivision, and the proposal is not in a planning area. There were no outstanding concerns from the technical review portion. The septic system for lot eight was inspected and repaired a few years ago and is in current, currently in good working order. Because the applicant is not requesting any new lots, soil analysis for the two southern parcels were not required. Staff did receive a few phone calls from neighbors asking for reassurances, reassurances that their boundaries would not be disturbed, and staff explained that the lot line adjustment was just for lot eight and no other lots within, within the subdivision would be altered. This is the existing residence on lot eight. And this is looking west and east along Driftwood Approach, Washington County 4080 from lot five. And staff recommends these conditions of approval. Any questions?
All right, no questions, thanks. Applicant here, would they like to say anything?
Yes, my name is Alan Reed. I'm the surveyor of this project, and I'm here representing both Mr. Dust, who owns lot eight in Beavarama, and the party that owns tract one and two to the south. And Mr. Dust just wants to buy some of, some of the land to the south, and it was kind of, had a little strange boundary between the two tracts, one and two, so he did, the man to the south did an adjustment, and it kind of squared up a nice rectangular shape of land that could be added to Mr. Rust's to give him just a larger area behind his house. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Anybody in the public want to comment? All right, to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve. I guess no one has any comments.
All right.
No. Replat of lot eight, Beavarama Park.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Next item up, item F, replat lot six, Rose Prairie Estates subdivision, CETA?
Item F. The applicant is requesting to replat lot six and subdivide it into two smaller lots. This project is not in a planning area. There were no concerns and no outstanding issues from the technical review portion of the project. Soil analysis shows that the proposed new lot is suitable for septic. Additionally, there were no comments from surrounding neighbors. This is the existing residence on lot six. This is looking north and south along Vine Grove lot six, from lot six. Staff recommends these conditions of approval. There is one change to the conditions since the time of your staff report, and that is for the septic and sewer systems. Originally, we could say that staff did not have a copy of the soil analysis, and we do, so we would like to strike that from the conditions. There are no other changes. Any questions?
Any questions for CETA? Anyone?
This looks eerily familiar to, to a lot that we approved, or had a question on, they wanted to put a dance hall or music hall. Is there any restrictions to anything that's, can be done on lot one?
On lot one? Or do you mean the?
Yeah. I mean, is there covenants and stuff? It just, you know, how we got into that situation that evolved, and there was a drive down the side.
Yeah, I remember that.
It just seems like we might waste some agreement or disagreement of what can or cannot be done on the lot behind my house, so.
We, we, we are not familiar with what the covenants say for this particular subdivision. However, covenants usually state that the lots have to be for residential use.
Okay.
Did we have any input or feedback from any of the residents or the POA?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody in the audience want to comment on this one? Okay, to the board.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion for approval of replat lot six, Rose Prairie subdivision, subject to the updated staff requirements as stated.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next item, county G, Anderson and Dapp Minor Subdivision. Blake?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Anderson Dapp Minor Subdivision consists of two tracts of two acres in size each. The subject property is located on Highway 59 North, due northwest of Highway 244. The immediate surrounding uses are residential and agricultural. There's been, it would help if I loaded it up. There's been no recorded objections by neighbors, and the typical utility and planning board conditions apply.
All right. Anybody got any questions for Blake?
I have one, real quick, Mr. Chair. The, the drawing shows tract one, the gravel drive is actually inside the 10-foot building setback on the lot, proposed lot split.
Correct.
Is there any issue on our ordinances having a drive within a building setback?
There is not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, anybody in the audience want to comment? First of all, is the applicant here and would like to say anything? Yeah. You'll state your name and address, sir.
Andy Hooper with Bates and Associates. I'm just here to answer any questions you guys might have.
All right. Any questions for Andy? All right, anybody in the audience want to comment? All right, to the board.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the Anderson and Dapp Minor Subdivision.
All right, we got a motion?
I'll second.
Got a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, sir. All right, on to other business, discussion of current development, planning department activities. Blake, that'd be you?
No updates at this time, thank you.
Okay. Reminder of the upcoming regular planning board meetings, the next one is May 5th. I will go ahead and give you a heads up, I will be out of country, I will not be here for that one. The next one after that will be June 9th. If there's not anything else, then I'll adjourn the meeting. Thanks, everybody.